And then go to the flag.
Okay, uh, we'll call this meeting to order at six oh eight P M. If everyone could rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation on our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, looking at one dash three approval of nine minutes or do we have a second? No, we'll do one issue. All right, minutes for February eleventh meeting. Can I get a motion?
So move second.
Thanks. Ken and Tim in discussion. All is in favor.
All right.
Pose motion is carried. One dash four in a motion for tonight's agenda.
So move.
Excellent.
Second.
Thanks Kate. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Oppose. Motion is carried. All right, moving into business operations. Ah, can I get a motion for the consent agenda for business operations two, four?
So move.
Except I'll suck it. Thanks Ken. Discussions. That includes the general fund warrant in the amount of five hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-four forty-nine. Special aid, fund warrant, seven hundred eighteen dollars and eighty-four cents, and the school lunch warrant, eight thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. All is in favor?
All right.
Pose. Motion is carried and I'll turn it over to Dr. Spring for good news.
Okay, hold on, present.
And superintendent's report.
Great.
All in one.
So we've got lots of great news and we have a busy week here. So starting tomorrow, we have Legally Blonde. So tomorrow is the dress rehearsal. I know it's a busy week. Um, so the dress rehearsal tomorrow is six thirty, um, but you are welcome to attend the dress rehearsal or you can attend the shows. They are Thursday night, Friday night, and then Saturday there's a matinee. So Legally Blonde.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Probably have thought of this, but it's great and unfortunate that Thursday will have this and the next basketball playoff game. Have you thought about having people to direct for parking?
So, uh.
Earlier.
So I think that's a great idea. Um, Cynthia.
Mm hmm. So we probably want to fill basketball like into the actual lot where people like to cheat over.
Right.
And you'll want these spaces for people going to the actual.
So so we'll figure something out with um, having some people here who can direct um, and.
The games.
Games at six thirty.
I was gonna say.
Right. The game's at six thirty, the place at seven on Thursday night.
So you get all the basketball people here first.
Mm hmm.
And if we fill that lot, then we'll probably preserve the parking over here. Right.
Yeah. And hopefully no one will park in the mud, right, on the lot.
That's where they'll stay. It's probably gonna be a big crowd. It's gonna be really.
Exciting. Yeah, it'll be very exciting. So um, so hopefully we'll see you there.
Yep.
So tonight we have an update on the district's priorities and one of our our budget goals is that our budget supports our district's framework of our mission, our vision, our beliefs and our commitment. So I always think it's a great idea just to review it, to rededicate ourselves to um, this framework and obviously you can, we can update the framework as well as, you know, that that could be something you can do with the the new superintendent. So our vision, imagining, designing and creating best futures. And we are a partnership of students, staff and families and our community, which is a really critical piece here, and we are dedicated to educating the whole child for personalized success. So we have um, our priorities, which are aligned with our beliefs and our commitments. So we believe in high expectations and learning by all and are committed to all students and staff being supported through personalized growth and agency to be their best while held to rigorous educational standards and high achievement. We believe in wellness and are committed to all students, staff and families being engaged in an environment that values equity and diversity and promotes social, emotional and physical wellness, citizenship and safety. We believe in future-ready knowledge and skills and are committed to all students being prepared for post-secondary success and nurture to become intellectually curious and creative, critical thinkers who are effective communicators and collaborators. And lastly, we believe in the efficiency of resources and we will innovate to maximize resources and partnerships to meet program objectives and the needs of all students.
It might need to move that far.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe. That way.
Okay.
Perfect.
So this is our how. How do we fulfill? And again, our our framework is aspirational as it should be. And so how do we meet those aspirations? So our first priority, we will address instructional learning gaps and focus on increasing academic achievement for all students. And we know that a really big initiative this year has been to go distraction-free. And so I'm proud of our school district. I think we're very close and we're really happy that we have Mr. Parity right now, so he can now take it to the next level of being distraction-free. So so we're excited about that. Um, professional development, we know how critical this is for uh, supporting our teachers and their practice, which translates into success for our students. So the teams through their teacher leaders have identified their P D goals for the school year. So we're continuing to move forward on those. So some of the highlights are science teachers at MPS are looking at curriculum materials that align with the new science standards. Um, in this grades five through twelve, the science department led by John Crowick are reading the ambitious science teacher and they're also unpacking the NISL standards. So um, science of reading is still really important. We've had some professional development through the reading league at the beginning of the school year. And we also have a reading coach who continues to support our teachers and and looking at the data. Our English teachers. So we administered the English regions in January. So uh, we'll have a full report on that. So the results were not spectacular, but aligned with where we usually fall. Um, but we are committed to still keeping it with that January date. Um, so we'll have more on that, but it is something that we was a goal and and we were able to do that. Um, least restrictive environment. Again, Katie talked about all the professional development sessions and the playbook they're creating. Math a priority is really looking at graphing calculator training for all for teachers and for students. Well, not teachers, for students. Um, music and art. So next week we have the all county event, which we are hosting, and that has been a very big initiative that they've been working on. And then our librarian, she has been spearheading A I. We are having a demonstration later this month on using Khan Academy and Khan Migo. So it's a really great tool for teachers. And there are also A I embedded tools in there, which I think are really exciting and cutting edge. So so we're gonna be looking into that more. And I know our librarian has done a lot of research-based partnership and collaboration with other teachers and co-teaching with them on different research projects and and that's going really well.
So would you say that that's just sort of, I mean, the word explores there, but really exploratory phase of how to get teachers more comfortable with using A I? Could potentially that be part of their P D and?
So I think it should be. Um, so today I had a a post-conference with our elementary Spanish teacher. And I mean, she's the only practitioner, right? She doesn't have anyone to collaborate with even within probably fifty miles. Okay, because we're unique. So what I said is really chat G P T. You can tell them, you know, the you wanted to teach hace frío, hace calor. And how do you develop your lessons? And and chat G P T can apps, it helps teachers still about develop their lessons. But Khan Migo is the new A I part of that, and they are just off the charts with with helping teachers. It's really important.
Um, they admit sixty minutes of story a month or two ago about Khan Migo and it actually showed a chemistry teacher, you know, they designed the lab, it was, you know, explore matter, is asked the computer question.
Yes.
Trying to use A I.
It's very interactive.
Just cheating, I'm gonna say. It also shows how like when you actually go through and all of a sudden, oh my God, you wrote a paragraph in thirteen seconds. You know, like it it also picks up that sort of stuff too, but using that as a tool. Because ultimately, I promise you, like, I didn't grow up with it, but like kids are gonna have it and at some point they're gonna have to function instead of trying to, you know, hide it and do it. Teach them to train, do us the best private.
It's gonna revolutionize everything.
Everything.
This is going, it's gonna be three times what this means.
Right, we're prepared for the future.
Yeah.
We 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 can't hide, you know, we have to be able to do the positive way.
Right. And to Tim's point, I think that's we are interested as board in understanding more what our role is in supporting that, but both for students and for teachers. You know, I can think back like this. Cell phones a good example, but even going back to the transition from like typewriting and keyboarding to using a computer, sending email, using the internet and how in education, in a lot of cases, there was slow adoption. Because it was very different, like this doesn't need to be the same way. This could really be a win for teachers, like you mentioned, great examples of gaining efficiency. While also showing them the parts of, I think, teaching that are still super relevant and important that they need to be even better at to keep students' attention.
So they showed examples about, for example, you could actually have a personal conversation with Edgar Allan Poe. To really know what he was like. And and so that's that's kind of, I don't know if it's creepy or not, but it's it's pretty powerful, right?
I think it is going to happen extremely quickly. I'm stunned at some of the stuff which is already out there.
And that's the difference too, like you think about history and stuff like that, everything's a revolution, but everything education is average.
Right, because they still have one A B C.
Where the world changes so fast and it's so slow amongst educators and stuff.
Well, they still have one A B C.
Right.
You can learn.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
It has another layer to it that we have to get done.
I know Kate had something.
Is the Khan Migo.
Migo.
At law.
Yes. Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I think we'd be interested in the future to either indicate off on just down the road as you get more settled in, uh, as Kirk comes on or understanding like what the vision could look like for next year even in terms of, again, the P D piece, but incorporating it in the classroom and embracing it versus, you know, we're not sure because to Tim's point, I mean, I see it in my work, obviously, um, it's it's moving really fast.
Right.
And we have multiple different A I assistants that we use for everything, even, you know, our internal text messaging system through Slack. A I to help generate messages. I shouldn't, but it's just.
Yeah.
Going so fast.
It is, and it's exciting. I mean, I'm even looking at our atlas, you know, how we house all of our curriculum and I don't know, it's not A I. So I there are a lot of pieces that we need to look at and I think.
That's where I think it's gonna affect so much. Software engineers that I know say that A I is gonna put them out of business. That's the reason Google's laid off all these software engineers. A I can write the software for you. So it's it's gonna be exciting.
Yep.
Okay, let's see. All right, hold on, toggling the next one. Okay, um, continue to analyze current and historical data. So I think we showed you how Becky made those folders for all of the teachers. You know, in the in the the shared doc uh, drive for all the A P uh, data, the regions, the New York State three-three assessments, um, local assessment data. So we've been looking at the data, we've been sharing the data. So uh, wait a minute, hold on. So one of the things that we've looked at is we've talked about is, well, how do we have our district metrics that we can really take a look at? So this isn't a completed document, but this is something we've been working on with our teacher leaders. Um, just to really have a a history of what we're really measuring, what are the key metrics that are going to really inform our instruction and tell us how we are doing. And then how do we track that and how do we set our targets? So so this is something we're working on. And when we talk about priority one and how we're addressing instructional learning gaps, focusing on increasing acaden- academic achievement for our students. Well, how are we measuring that? And that's something the board has has asked. So so this is our uh, attempt at doing it. We're working on it. Um, and we'll continue to report on this. So and eventually all the priorities should be measured. So we're still we're we're working on priority one this year. All right, hold on. All right, creating that culture of data analysis. So even the whole uh, stay in the game, chronic absenteeism, attendance, challenge. It's we're looking at the data and I think it's a a very exciting use and interactive way. So we and and Andre will talk more about this later. So we've got baseline data for every single grade level, okay? And we also have our first period data by first period teacher. So they're going to be sharing this. Um, the teachers are going to be setting goals and targets and we're really going to drive down deep into, you know, wh- what students and families really need our support. So so I think it's it's we're we're getting there with the data. Um, we're making progress. Let's see what else. And I know the board was interested in the number of students in A P fuel credit honors courses. I don't have the exact numbers, but I know that they've increased. So. And we can, we can get that information for you. So we have some new recognition ceremonies. Um, and we've talked about this through our grading study last year. So we have June fifth is our celebration. We're recognizing graduating seniors and academic awards for students in grade seven through eleven. So the class valedictorian and salutatorian in the top ten members of the class of twenty twenty-five will be announced. Um, it will be based on the interim report of the fourth marking period. So that's when we're locking it. And the seniors who achieve the highest honors, high honors and honors recognitions will be recognized and announced and they'll get, they're gonna get their stoles that they'll be wearing at graduation. So I will show you later on our calendar for next year and we've already set graduation and we'll talk more about that. So we're celebrating student success, um, having an underclassman award ceremony. That's something apparently Waterville used to do, hasn't done in many years. We want to get back to really recognizing students for working hard. And so um, it will be at that same ceremony.
That's that that'll be held this year?
It will be held on June fifth.
Oh.
Yep.
I like the greatest growth.
Yes.
Concept also.
Yes. Yep, because everyone used to say most improved. It's a little kinda maybe doesn't sound so nice, but greatest growth is like, wow, you really, you're awesome. You worked really hard and you make. Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, a hundred percent.
Yeah. So for the um, stay in the game, we're using M V P just because it's the basketball theme, but it's based on greatest growth. Yeah. So we're we're going to hold senior day this year, June sixteenth. We want to make sure our seniors have a day that, you know, is is a fun day, but also still a learning day, a day that we're sending them off. And how can we better equip them with some last minute information that may help them, such as uh, topics on financial literacy, maybe having one of the first source or one of the banks come in, panel of graduates from the class of twenty twenty-four, campus life, how to be a successful employee. So we're gonna work on that. Really excited that we have our administrative team in place at the junior, senior high, because now they can make these things happen. So. So priority two, we will implement strategies, programs and services to enhance the social, emotional, physical wellness of both students and staff. So a big thing, and you've heard about this, our multi-tiered system of support. And so this is something that we've been working on and how we can really focus on the needs of the whole child as it relates to social, emotional, behavioral and academic growth and how we can put those malt, those tiers into place and those interventions. So. And part of that was getting the support of the behavior specialist and she's mostly working with our MPS students, uh, mostly in kindergarten, actually, and things are going very well. Well done. All right, reduce student chronic absenteeism. Again, this has been a priority for three years, but I really feel that our March Madness event is going to get the the awareness out there to our families. Um, it really wanted to thank the the um, foundation for supporting two thousand dollars in prize money for our students. It's going to our students and then to the winning coach, one of the teachers. So so thank you, Patty Louise. Um, and the big thing is what are these tiered interventions? When we talk about our M T S S, what are the tiered dimensions? Interventions and um, Andre's already planning his student success team, his me, uh, his weekly meetings and really having attendance being a huge part of that. So excited about that. So our grading practices, so it was a huge um, study from last year. I think we made a lot of progress. And so our departments are still working on having consistent grading practices. Um, we're still looking at the use of zeros. We did talk about developing pre-K uh, twelve habits for learning. So that's something we're going to put off. Um, just I I don't think we're gonna be able to get to it this year. And then also New York State has come out with their profile of a graduate and one of our goals was to really relate that to a profile of the Waterville graduate and what that means and operationalizing that for our students and our curriculum and our programs. Strengthen district commun- uh, communications and public relations. So I think we did a nice job of informing our our community of our distraction-free environment and the change that happened there. The capital project, I think we did a nice job there getting the word out and getting it passed and um, making sure that all those materials were also on our website. And uh, the board also wanted to see a more consistent social media presence. And I know we had turnover in the position, but I think Alicia's doing a great job. Um, and I think she's, she sends out press releases. So you maybe may have noticed that we're in the Rome Sentinel. We've never been in the Rome Sentinel before. And that's because Alicia is really pushing out these press releases and she is pushing out information on social media. So I think she's doing a great job.
As far as communication, can we just talk about Parents Square too, as far as what we've kind of addressed in the past, as far as, you know, the amount that are that's going out and just I think with pushing out so many messages throughout the day, sometimes at ten o'clock at night, uh, people just aren't paying attention to them as much. So if we have a condensed, uh, you know, certain time of day, it always goes out, it's scheduled.
Well.
Building by building, it might be more efficient.
So I don't know if we're gonna be able to be that coordinated unless you have one person doing that. So I'm not sure, because different peoples do have those rights. You know, because I know something went out from the counseling office, something. So it was, I was like, oh no, it was coming out from a lot of different areas on one particular day.
We may not know how. I promise you there's a way to do it. Especially the technology. There's guardrails that could be put.
People using their settings to go to digest.
Right, so.
Immediate.
So the people who receive the Parents Square messages can.
Right. And and again, like, I think that's something for further discussion probably when we have all the info, but if we rely on the parents to get the settings right, we will fail the customer who's the parent. Like, we have to be able to be the guardians of, you know, obviously in the morning, if it's a critical message like, hey, we have a delay, that goes out when it goes out.
So that is what they call the alarm.
Right, those are fine, but I think systematically there has to be a way, because there definitely is, to put blockers in place where teacher so-and-so or the principal, they can enter standard messages, but those don't go out.
Yeah.
Until a certain time, like, because they're not deemed as critical, like, all of that can be done.
Well, I'm even thinking more so just on behalf of the entire junior, senior high, you know, they're 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 getting notifications throughout the day on various activities.
No, I agree.
Outside the school, inside the school, those could all go out at a certain time every day. Yes, as a classroom teacher, you know, you still have access to send it out to your specific classes whenever you feel like you need to message them. Um, but more so like a streamlined, um, here's, you know, the book fair information uh, for MPS. I don't even know if that has gone out yet, and I think that's next week. Um, a hundredth day is tomorrow. I don't know if people even know that that's tomorrow.
Right.
Um, so it's just kind of picking and choosing what goes out and when it goes out versus a million times a day.
I like the model, that the daily announcements, they all get pushed out in the morning. So maybe everything just goes on that.
But I think it's something to study and ask people like what works. And and you'll never be perfect, right? Like, even if you streamline it and it all goes out at once, you'll have people that don't read it. Read it all, like, but we will, we will be addressing.
Right. So I'm gonna just warn everybody in advance. We we have daily messages for the March Madness. About like fun. Okay.
Daily, I think the daily morning thing or something is.
To inspire students.
Yes.
Right, okay.
I have an article for anybody. Right, every morning I don't mind waking up to it.
The better, just streamlined.
Noon.
People get a parent spirit too, that's everywhere.
Yeah.
All the same parents, parents districts and everybody.
But I think I get a daily announcement, one at seven A M. every single day at my district and I can go there and I can click on this link for this happening. I can see this flyer for for this event and it's just all streamlined in one place for my particular building. And that then there's not a million that come out other than the press releases or, you know, phone lines are down um, or important, you know, ones that.
You know, if you get one at noon.
Right, then.
There's a situation going on versus.
So I mean, we can make sure it's all on those daily announcements and it's just.
You do, that's.
And also we need to, Mike, we need to look at. Like, we need to look at who has the access to do the all. Okay, and those are the people that we need to like try to you know, limit. So we can do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it'd be hard to set up.
Okay, so, um.
Can we, can we talk about the capital project real quick though?
Yeah.
Since you, but I was waiting for, I mean, I just want to publicly thank, again, the community. I think it was what, eighty-five percent? When we calculated it approval and we never take that for granted.
Right.
Uh, we work very hard as a as board, as district, to plan our finances, be responsible and then communicate. I do think the communication was good, but communicate to the public exactly what we're doing, why we're doing it. I thought the process this year, the way we prioritized what was going to happen and the way we monitored this project was the best I've seen. Uh, and the public responded. That's the best code we had. It's usually in the seventies, but to see it at eighty-five percent kind of at an off time of year, because we usually do them around the time of the budget voter with the budget vote. I just was really thankful, uh, and grateful to the public and want to make sure to say that. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Little bit spot. And people are excited about a number, everything in there, but a number of things in there, especially people who realized that that includes A C for F P S. Addressing some of the things proactively like the fire alarm system and everything before it.
And the roof, because now it's leaking. Just in time.
Appreciate it.
So thirty twelve E is the new updated um, A P P R law. So I had hoped that the W T A and and myself would get together and start whittling away at it, um, because the deadline to uh, input your new um, agree agreements is March first. So so unfortunately, that's not gonna happen for this year. So the good news is there's still is, we still have six more years, so there's time. Um, and so that is, that will be a goal for next year, a priority for next year.
What does A P P R stand?
Um, the annual performance, the professional performance review. And W T A negotiation. So um, we do have our Finn meeting scheduled. I believe it's April twenty-fifth at five o'clock. An hour before that board meeting where where we will be meeting with the perb negotiators um, to learn more about it. So we're hoping then that and we'll have um, both sides there and then we'll be scheduling in May. So that that's the timeline there. So we will have an agreement, tentative agreement that will go to the board and the board will be involved in this process. So you'll you'll hear more about that. But it will, we'll have a new contract in place accord. But it will, we'll have a new contract in place according to the July one deadline. Okay, the capital project, really excited about that. So we've been talking about our fund balance and a reserve plan and. And Cynthia presented on that um, last month. And our smart schools bond money, so we're still waiting to receive SED approvals, but we'll keep you posted on that one. So here's our draft student program calendar for the next school year. Wait, this one, excuse me. So this is the draft. The goal is to establish a discussion tonight and then we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. So. Right, so there's, so some of the highlights, two weeks off again at Christmas or the, the winter holiday, there'll be two weeks off. Um, we start after Labor Day, so we'll have our first two superintendent conference days on September second, September third. Uh, the fourth will be the first day of school. We've already planned our early release days. We are not having parent teacher conferences at the secondary level. So we tried it. We tried for three years to get it up and running. Um, it just. It, it's just difficult at the secondary level, even though it was, I felt uh. Something very critical and important. So, so it will only be elementary and that will be June, uh, December fourth.
Can I uh, just make a quick change?
December fourth and fifth on a Friday. Jen, hold on. Okay, we have to look at that, that's not.
April, if you look at the April two thousand twenty five bottom. That should be April two thousand twenty six.
All right, so thank you.
I just happened to like, cause I was looking at the spring break and I'm like, wait a minute. That's early, but that's this year, so.
Yeah, so we'll work on this.
Okay, no, that's fine.
The junior senior high conferences, was it lack of parent interests? Like what is the reason it's not working?
I think all of you, Bob.
If we're at the secondary level for that, it's done as needed. So like, you know, instead of waiting for a certain time, so we have our success team meetings every week. We may see an issue with a kid coming in, you know, first week in October, we'll bring the parents in and have a parent. Or there's a, this, or parent can also request it. The kids got parking plugs, they're struggling in this, can we have the teachers there? So most of the time it's going both ways. As need throughout the year. So it's not that we don't do parent conferences and you know, and people can request or whatever like that. It's not a set day, you know, maybe the time of year is not the most appropriate time, there's not the concern there. So we'll work them out. Throughout the year as needed on different.
So it, it was really something coming out of the pandemic. We really wanted to connect more with our parents. Um, but I'm confident with our new administration. That we'll have regular parents and meetings with parents and it won't, it wasn't, it was difficult.
Yeah, I would just like to understand again, not now, but in the future when they're ready, what? The process would look like, what the structure would look like, what would trigger a, a conference, you know? What, what a parent would expect they request, because I think it does go both ways. I think parents should be able to request one, but there also should be a reasonable amount of time to schedule that. And that should all be communicated upfront versus, oh, I need a conference like tomorrow. Okay, well. Maybe, maybe, maybe it's like a week, you know, but I, and I think. Framing that out and then communicating that to parents would probably be a great thing.
I agree with that.
Yeah, because we haven't had that historically, like it's been available. If you need, like the school's always been great, like if you reach out, like I need to meet with. But there's never been a structure.
Right.
And I think sometimes parents don't know.
Right, and I, I try.
I go to, what is, do I go to the teacher? Do I go to the principal, like what works, so.
So, and then graduation is going to be held on June twenty seven. So if you remember, our recommendation is that we wait until the very end. When all the grades are in and then we can calculate all of our honors calculations. Um, for graduation. So, so we will work to that and for the next school year.
A random question I had earlier and I waited to ask it and I almost forgot. So. For grading. Do we have a system? Then again, this has happened to one of my students, but. When, when there's an incomplete because the teacher's not in. Do we have a system? That checks and balances that grade to make sure it's inputted properly at some point. You know, we end up with report cards where it's not, it's not a complete report card. It could be good or it could be bad. Missing a grade, and maybe that child, especially with our honors, maybe that child would have made. A certain level of honors, they did or they didn't, like how do we navigate that?
Right, so we have had a, a unfortunately, a number of leaves and teachers have been out. So we've been hit hard and it's been very. You know, it's been difficult for students, there's no question about it. So um, I'm not exactly sure all of that level of detail. But I think that Mr. Parity can, you know, look into that.
Yeah, one of the glitches was, you know, the calculation back on the school tool and how they did things. That's kind of stuff, the most recent one really that. Typically, what we'll go through, we'll do grade change, you know, it is handed through, we'll double check it when they go through. I think in this last situation, I just happened to be in that day.
Right.
Starting, what did you go this time, something like that. But you know, like I would also would recalculate it and we'll see. So yeah, I'm not gonna take anything away from kids. I'm saying somebody dropped out because of it, but the kids should be honored who did it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Well, and I don't, I don't mean the notification piece. I mean, like this actually. So they, it has occurred to me that we might not have a real check and balance in place because a few years ago, we had a teacher, again legitimately. Medical unforeseen issue was out a long time. And came back right before the end of the market period. And did a whole bunch of grades and there was, there were some inaccuracies. It was all corrected. But there were a handful of students who received their report cards. Maybe didn't make honorable because this was done incorrectly. Now we've had a similar situation where. It's not that, but we have teachers out and we have a lot of incompletes. And how are we going to make sure that when those grades are inputted?
Right.
We go back and say, oh, this student did make honorable or, oh, well, this student, you know, their average went down because they didn't do all the work. Like how are we going to ensure?
I'll work together with our counselors, you know, we are, we separately just two counselors, two administrators who go through the systems part, not. The kids meetings are at meeting, so it's, it's actually gonna talk about how we do our scheduling, how do we do it for it. This is what we need to do. These are, they should, counselor should be going through spot checking all the report cards to see. You know, if they're correct before we hand them out, just like when we do scheduling. There, I went through a roster timeline with that. They physically need to look and view every single schedule and sign off it before it goes. And that's one of the days that we have to do this summer. So I think putting in those systems can try to establish those routines. As we go through the next year, those are things that we are talking about and building up those things. And now hopefully we have some stability and consistency. Hopefully that will diminish some of those things.
And I'm not sure if all of the incompletes been completed. I, I have no idea.
I don't think we would know that. That's what I'm saying. I don't think we have a process.
There's usually a certain number of days.
Right.
I, I don't know what's.
And, and I just keep thinking about, again, not the kids, like from my house where the parents are going to make sure. The work's done and their fault, but for some students that they may not even realize.
Right.
That they didn't get a grade completed or, you know, they, they should have passed the class and they didn't, you know, they shouldn't.
They, they didn't have answers. The ones that had received an incomplete. The. Question as the parent would be, what is this? I don't know, all my work is done. And they don't have, and the student themselves do not have the answers. And the, the parents that actually, you know, are pushing. To go that extra step. Oh. Come down hard and when they legitimately don't have answers. You know, so. In a way, you know, and again, it's not something that can be fixed overnight, but it's something that we have to address and move forward with. You know. You know, I, I. I also, I, I don't know when to really bring this situation, just not a situation, but a question up. I know we talked about it last time when. Comes down to scheduling and grading and honors classes and stuff, but. Your, I, I, I don't know, I don't want to make any, make something not a priority, but your music, your gym, that. Is a graded class now, correct?
No, so the, so.
No. My question is, is, we discussed it with.
They're not in the GPA.
Okay.
They're not part of the GPA.
So my question is, is. Are we still pulling students out, or I know we are, um. In like honors classes in any of your, of your.
For music lessons.
For music lessons, because what I'm running into and it's actually affecting my, my child and not to be personal, but if it's affecting him, it's affecting. Several others is, he's in all honors. And he wants to play an instrument. But for once, I, I can honestly say the honors class is, is pushing him. He does not want to miss that. I can't miss this because I can't keep up. Or it's not the point that he can't keep up. He knows if he misses that class, it's very detrimental to.
Yes.
Tomorrow because.
Scheduling it in like a study hall.
So.
Right, so I know we discussed that. You know.
He's going to be looking at this.
Throw down music lessons, that's something I have to learn.
You know, and it's definitely, um, you know, he, it's been mentioned to several times that. I'm staying in honors because of.
And we want them in our music.
And he wants to play this instrument. And he's trying to juggle it. But then, he doesn't want to get in trouble because he's skipping the instrument. You know, i- i- I just feel that we need to look at, we talked about it last year.
We did.
And we kind of, it kind of drifted off, but now. It's actually affecting, I can actually see now you hear about it and you really can't picture it until now you actually see the student actually come home. I don't know what to do. I'm like, you need to be honest with your teachers. And, you know, and he goes, I can't keep up if, so. I just really want to look at it before, you know, now's the time to actually get it addressed.
I have to look at what the policy is, what the scheduling looks like. Is it a rotating schedule?
I, I.
Is it done?
Don't know.
Be a rotating, but I don't think.
I don't know what it is.
I don't, I, and I don't have that in. But I know it's definitely affecting.
There's gotta be makeup things built into the system too. So if I'm in this class. I'm able, if I miss a lesson, I'm able to make up X number by the year. We build and make up time for those sort of things to where it could be the time. You know, we go through stuff.
Right.
I just, let me do some research.
Absolutely, absolutely, but now's the time, I think we should, really.
And then we can set, you know, maybe we'll get what we can done this year, but then we can actually look at what's the best practice moving forward.
Cause I actually think that's a re, you know, we do see numbers, you know, from, look at the MPS numbers for band. And they start to drift off. I wonder if, because we're now, we're pushing our kids for the honors and everything like that. And these kids are like, you know, all right, I'll do this. Well, how do I dump something easy? There goes, and now Mr. Machete's now suffering because we're pushing our kids here. I think. We should have them push everything we all, you know.
Right.
Because band is big and I don't want to lose the numbers from MPS just because now we're pushing our kids and the honors. Mr. Machete's.
So we're looking at, we're looking at the music schedules.
Right.
Yeah. So uh, budget development process, let's look at our calendars. So February twenty fifth. So update on district's priorities, already did that. Tax cap approval, so. Uh, we did present the draft and Cynthia is going to just review that again and she does have some updated. Uh, numbers to add to that. And also Cynthia will be going over the bus, the planned or proposed bus purchases. Um, for twenty five, twenty six. Right, okay, hold on. So one of the things, these are our goals. We talked about this, I think it was our last meeting and. And uh, the board was good with all of these. But I, the more I think about it, I think right now we're in uncertain times with the economy, right? So I wanted to add in yellow, you can see with efficiency, I think it's really critical that. You know, we, we have an efficient lens and, and I, I really am happy that we have our new administrators here because they're going to be. You know, spending time looking at the lens with, how can we be more efficient with our schedule, with our programming and, and with all of that. So, so I wanted to add that if the board's okay with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Cynthia?
Oh, favorite. Everybody tax cap calculation, um, I presented last week and on the second page that.
All right, I'm not good at this sheet too, yeah.
I see.
So this is the capital exclusions sheet. And um, we had originally last week, um. Gone out with a number for two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six was our estimated transportation aid. And then I had a discussion with Andrew.
Shirek.
Thank you. At fiscal advisors and there are two buses that the state has not picked up on aid yet. And, but they will be aided next year. So we did a projection uh, for the state uh, aid and um.
So those are more accurate, so these are more accurate.
Getting, so we updated the cap, capital exclusions page. And so now if you go down to um.
On the same sheet.
Twenty-five, yeah, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six transportation aid at the bottom.
Keep going, keep going.
Yeah, keep going. Little apart. Yeah, right now. So you'll see three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six. So that is the updated number. So when I presented two weeks ago, we had estimated it to be two hundred and seventy-three, seven twenty-six. It is now estimated at three hundred and eighty-eight, seven twenty-six. That is going to be our debt. That will get aided on for our school bus purchases. So the amount of aid will then go up to three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. You'll see that right underneath the three hundred and eighty-eight. So it's at the ninety percent aid. And that would then lower, if you go up a little higher, that just right, that would then lower the amount that we need. From our um. Unappropriated fund balance to put in. So two weeks ago, we estimated that to be a hundred and ninety-five thousand. It'll now drop to ninety-two thousand. So our tax cap calculation stays the same though. We would still go out at two percent. We would still have the same increase as I presented two weeks ago. We just adjust the amount that we would have to put in on the.
Off of the fund balance.
And it's lower, so that's a victory. So thank you.
And it's good because it's consistent. So I do have a projection.
All right, which one, next slide? Is it then, tell me where to go.
I think go, go back to your presentation.
All right, the next slide.
And then it should be the next slide.
All right, but you can see where we are.
It's always.
So two percent is, yep.
Okay, so it's actually the third slide.
This one? Is it this one?
Yeah. So I, that's probably hard for all of you to see.
It's a little bit.
Yeah, it was hard for me to get it on the slide. Um, I was having. I can send it to you.
Well, it's in the presentation, you can also, all right.
Yeah. So um, I projected for the twenty-six, twenty-seven year. And so for this year, the projection, the amount that we're going to have to go out at um, for unappropriated fund balances ninety-two thousand. So for twenty-six, twenty-seven, the projected would be eighty-nine thousand. And it would still keep us at our two percent. We would stay absolutely the same. And um, so I have all the updated numbers. There's a couple of numbers I'll never be able to, to get. They're just projected, the tax growth base that I get that from the state and stuff. So uh, but those are pretty consistent year to year too. Um, so very confident that this would be. This would keep us on a very even level.
Yeah.
For the years to come. So for next year, two percent is what I believe we should be able to do at eighty-nine thousand.
So for two years in a row for this year and then, I mean, for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six.
And that's even with.
We'll have to use, look again, that's the tax cap, cap, you know, the levy limit that we'll be going out at. Um, and obviously we'll have to balance the budget with our.
With fun.
Yes, with fund balance, right.
So just a question on this, it's actually not this, and we may not have an answer. Have, have we had, you know, we passed the capital project? Have we had any? Communication thoughts around. Potential hurdles down the road with. Increased materials cost. That's just something to keep, put a pin in and keep an eye on.
Exactly, for the tariffs.
Funding perspective.
You're saying like tariffs and stuff.
Right, yeah, yeah, I mean, like if, if, if anything within. Anything of significance in the building, material industry goes up potentially by fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent. You could have significant change.
Right, I mean, here we're talking about vehicles, right, and our vehicle purchases. I mean, this is what we're.
That's what you said to that priority list and that capital project.
Right.
It's not so paradise on our highest needs.
Right, so I would wanna, that, that's something we wouldn't normally dedicate any bandwidth. For time to, but that could be something we should think about with like the. Capital project committee.
Yep, and we're meeting next week.
And, and start discussing like what that could look like for us. And would there be any recourse? Through the state, like, this could be really forward. Through the state that like, this could be really forward, but we should think that way. Or will we have to go back to the list and say, well, we put it all in order? We still feel this is the order. Here's what's at the bottom. If if we see a twenty percent increase, this portion. Would not be funded any longer. I think we should do that exercise. In the near future, just to prepare.
Drop loss could be, what are the things you're gonna.
And are we comfortable with that? And and again, the pushback up. Through BOSI's and to the state or whatever on these issues and say, hey, like there's the whoever's appropriate. You know, is the state looking at this?
Bus purchases. Does you happen to look into the discrepancy in the numbers that between like what I had seen on ISAD versus what you had on? From Questar?
No, no. So I think there there was just because you were adding them together. They were the correct numbers and I checked them again today before we met. They were the the same exact numbers that I had.
The total school aid was just different.
Were being added together on my.
Yes, on those two, but the total school aid was different.
The total school aid was different. So go ahead now. So this is, I got this off SED today. Matched it to my numbers that I had presented last week and they were exactly the same. So I'm not. So so you tell I. So go ahead and tell me.
So what is your school, the total school aid proposed budget?
So without. UPK.
Okay, so that's.
Places add in UPK.
Okay, so then that's the difference. That's the answer I was looking for. Okay.
So when we project out our state aid, we don't show you UPK because UPK is based on how many students we have enrolled.
Okay.
So right now they'll say four hundred and eighty thousand. It's actually like over this year, four hundred and five thousand. Well, last year we only got two hundred and eight because we had thirty six children enrolled. So that's based on enrollment. So we don't ever.
Yeah, so I guess that's what I was asking last time. So thank you for clarifying. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Why that la- the overall aid was different.
Right. So they have sixteen million, um, one thousand, seven hundred and eighty. Okay, so we match and then you subtract the UPK, which is four hundred and five.
But we're not gonna get all that money.
Right.
Right, so that's why you subtract it. Um, and then it's fifteen thousand, five hundred and ninety six. Also noted, UPK goes into our federal funds. It is not included in our general. So that's why it's exactly excluded from them.
What about the public high cost excess aid and like the looking into um, the decrease in that?
So that's, this is all, remember, this is just executive budget.
Right, but that's based on like the numbers that we submit.
Always low ball excess cost on your executive budget and then they raise it when it comes to your legislative budget.
Okay.
So it's based on um, where they are with their special ed counts in the state. And uh, I will look into and I spoke to Katie about this, giving me numbers on how many kids are, is there a difference from last year to this year? Are they that much lower? Or is it just because the state is is low balling, how much they're gonna give to us?
Yeah, because it's based on like with the number that we submit, correct?
Correct, yeah, yes. Mm-hmm. How many students?
Yeah, so I was just, yeah, curious about the difference between that year to last year um, to see, because. Under or knowing that our special ed numbers are increasing, it's just. I wanted to make sense of it in my brain.
Right. So and if our special ed numbers are increasing, are we doing in-house?
Right, versus out of district, because that's the out of district.
Get aided through BOSI.
Right, and that's separate. Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I wrote it down. I will have an answer for you on that the next one.
All right, bus.
Bus. So I'm calling this proposed vehicle purchases because I would like to add in a maintenance vehicle for us. So we have a two thousand and eight Chevy pickup that has so rusted out now.
It's dangerous to drive. There are carbon monoxide issues.
Yes. Yes. It has a sand machine on the back of it and it may go through the back of it if we use it any longer than this year. So we will not get aided on that, but we would like to put that in for financing. So we would roll it into our band that we purchased the buses with. So that's why we have to present it with our buses because it has to be voted on.
Makes sense.
Um. It would work because then we have financing for five years on it. And it gives us time when we're paying our local share to pay off the, it wouldn't be a purchase that we would have to pay out of pocket all at once.
It'd be still good and state bids, it'd be cheap.
Right, right.
Especially.
We don't have, is there a regular?
Re- um, replace.
So I create.
Regular replacement of these vehicles.
Yes, so Ethan and I created a maintenance equipment replacement um, schedule together. And um, that's when, because I had discussed with him.
For the pickups?
Yep. So I'm having Ethan help me in purchasing because he knows a lot about vehicles.
Absolutely.
Yep, and Travis also.
Oh, yeah.
So they were the ones who came up with what we should go out for this time. He thinks that we need to have a um, pickup truck with a dump body. So that we don't have to rent a dump trailer when we need to dump things. So you would have the dump on the back of it.
Yeah.
The pickup. Yep, and then it would have a plow on it.
So like a F five fifty, a five fifty duly kind of a thing. So it'd be almost like a mini dump truck in a way. Like, I got you. Okay, similar with the villagers.
Uh-huh.
Absolutely, that's.
Yes.
And you could follow with that, absolutely.
Like that.
No.
And both of our other vehicles, one of them is um, probably, I would say in the next couple of years, gonna. Go out of commission. So I would like some leeway. If we have a new one, we don't then necessarily have to to buy another one right away if. You know, it gives us that that. Time to decide.
Start the process.
Yep.
Start the start.
I'm assuming they don't get a whole lot of miles on them. That's how we.
They don't because, you know.
Right, just ground.
Other than like this year with the plowing. I'm apologize, I don't know why, turning everything off and it's so, I hate, I hate.
That's your plot, you know.
I apologize.
Time to, time to stop.
And I tried, I kept turning it off. Nothing's working. I hate technology.
So then you want to go over the totals?
So. So, okay, so bus purchases, we're gonna purchase two large buses this year or next year, sixty five passenger. Um, we are replacing buses that were purchased in twenty twenty. This will be the last year, twenty four, twenty five, that we are aided on them. And we are also going to purchase a small bus. Which is the twelve and fifteen, depending on if it's wheelchair, if you have wheelchair, it brings it down to twelve passengers. Um. And you can see the jump in the cost. So it was a hundred and ten thousand in twenty twenty. For the large bus and now it's a hundred and seventy seven thousand. And then for the small bus, it was seventy one thousand and now it's a hundred and eighteen thousand. So the jump in the cost of what these buses are costing us. Um, this is back on, just for a note, back on to our regular replacement schedule. Last year we added an extra bus. But this year we're not, we're just replacing the ones that are due to be replaced.
So and I did announce at our last meeting that Russ Stewart is retiring from serving on the OH on BOSI's board of uh, BOSI's board. Um, so we will need to nominate a current or former board member and the annual dinner is April second at five P M. And so I will. Introduce the Waterville candidate. And um, you'll meet everybody at that time and we're hoping that. We have someone who's interested.
I I think I.
Oh, great.
So.
All right, so so put that on your calendar, April second at five P M.
I thought Pete was gonna do one of them. No, I I do think I am, I just.
I have to nominate them, I think. So we can do that at the next meeting.
Russ and I talked once and then one of me was said, I get a better sense of. The exact commitment. For sure.
Well, thank you. I mean, I think it's exciting. I think, you know, Waterville has had a really strong voice in our BOSI's for many years and. And I think it would be really great to have you continue that legacy. So their their meetings are earlier. Oh, so, right, so is anyone else interested in going? So Steve is, we're RSVPing for Steve. And we'll go together. And is anyone else interested? To attend the meet, the dinner meeting? So Steve, you're it. Thank you. All right, Andre, you want to talk a little bit more about staying in the game?
Um. Yeah, this is my initiative, you know, for the district stuff with chronic absenteeism is not a Waterville issue. It's in every way you go, no matter whether you're suburban district, well, the district for district, urban district, chronic absenteeism is something that we really take a look at. Uh, since, especially from post pandemic, you know, and I think one of the big things that you see post pandemic is. What families and households deal with education and, you know, have to be there all the time. Plus kids re-entering, we can be into the mode of education and that's something that we see. And I know um. In my interview pack, I did do something, you know, presentation stuff. And if I think I believe Dr. Share, you ask me to do that. Part of my presentation, if you can look at what things we do, what is that chronic absenteeism, how do we look at things? One of the big things that I look at with it is. Trying to get our scores back to twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. You know, I look at that, whether we're looking at academics, you know, and so our districts, are we back to those passing rates that we were pre-pandemic? And we're, we see ourselves moving up in the direction. You know, one of the nice things is, and I think this is kind of surprise of some committee for the first time seeing it. Although our privacy teams is high, if you compare us to other parts of the district, like school districts in our ranking, we're actually doing better than. Other districts in it, you know, which I think is is a big positive. I think people were surprised if you look pre-pandemic, we, when you look at our. When S up like rank sheet ranks you and some of that, we're level two and really we're level three. So. There are some positive things doing it, but we always know that we can do better. And you know, and part of this, um, our state of game is um. Our initiative and our theme, um, and we worked with the teacher leaders have been great with this, trying to go through, coming up with ideas, coming up with things, how we go into it. Um, so we've had planning meeting, I've been here two days, I've been on a major planning meeting and I will out today. So um, our Becky's done phenomenal job pulling the data and you know, I think it's really. Interesting, it's been great because what we're gonna do is actually use the data. I'm sharing the data with students. Actually, you'll see in the later slide at my uh, student assemblies this week, so they're gonna see their grade level data. They're gonna see what it looks like up here. Nobody ever really talks about that stuff, you know. Um, so as part of this, we have initiative, each uh, homeroom will be a team, it'll be led by a coach. We are doing uh, door decorating, we're taking team pictures. We are. Going to kind of also build this as we go because we know like what happens March fifteenth and everybody's over it. We need to come up with something else to do it. You know, incentives and stuff are great and that's what our initial thing is trying to go through and do things. But probably the most important thing is we have to have intrinsic value, kids will see value to come to school and try and build it up. I mean, we can give out as many ice cream cones as we want, but it's gotta come at some point. Kids and families knowing the importance of doing it. And it is part of this wall out is going to do a lot of. Uh, parent family awareness. Um, Dr. Spring has put together, uh, did you know, you know, like what is the impact? You know, we know that one that the grade levels have the worst candidates is kindergarten. But if you think about how much school you miss between kindergarten and second grade, we're so far behind on those standard basis that it takes too long to catch up. You know, we know in high school, ninth grade is the most important year. If we don't connect kids and kids don't connect to school, people in the school, programs in the schools. They're not gonna make it to twelfth grade. The more kid comes in ninth grade is connected with things, the successful in ninth grade, they're gonna make it out to the twelfth grade across the stage and to things like that. You know, so that's part of this whole process is gonna be having that education thing. So today we shared the data with our teachers, so they have their their data. We look at the. The grade levels, we've ranked out the grade levels and we're basically looking for growth. You know, there's gonna be two awards, you know, who is maintaining high level of attendance and has the best attendance and who do we see world becoming things? You know, one of the things with tricky attendance, sometimes you get feedback, well, my kid is sick, they're not going to school. That there is normal sickness and there's normal things, but you know, trying to get those other times, I don't really feel like going to school today. You know, and and knowing what the importance are. We're lucky to the foundation, we're donating, you know, they're able to order prizes. And so we've come up with our. Some of our initial ideas to do it, we're gonna have a final trophy at the end of the year. The students are gonna build and it'll be the most gross in the, you know, MVP, it'll be. You know, for twenty twenty five, you know, class of twenty eight maybe, you know, and then we may see four years in a row, class twenty eight rocks that, you know, we can go through and see those different things. Just trying to, you know, build awareness, get excited about things uh, and looking at that stuff. Uh, and also doing it from a scientific background. Like this is what your data is, this is what our class is and trying to do it in a positive way. Uh, we also know that March is the worst attendance month for most and it also sets a tone for the rest of the year. Um, and that's what we, we give our kids to school. Any mind needs to do that. I should say.
March is the worst attendance month?
Usually it's a dark month, it's a long month, no breaks.
The third marking period's long.
Vacations in March.
Interesting.
You know, it's typically one of those.
Yeah, worth.
Yes, one of the tends to be our lowest. Yeah. Um, so some other updates from the building. So I started officially with kids yesterday. Within forty eight hours, uh, Mr. Rodell is the happiest man in his current position because he's coming here in two weeks. He's really excited. He like talk every night to go through how our day went and what's going on. So he starts March tenth, but I do want to thank Dr. Grimm um, for his service to the district, you know, stepping in as interim. He's been phenomenal with being the transition. And really working, you know, to help.
He's still around.
Things. He's still around. Yes.
Still around.
Yes.
Um, so he's he's with, he and I are here together until.
He's the assistant principal.
Right.
And then we talked about some things with him following up afterward. So he and I are working together. On everything going through. One of the nice things is, it'll get to us, we talked about the to me transitioning in. Is we've talked about like, he's still doing some of the day to day operations. I try and transition. So part of my transitions, this third bill, there's like. I have individual team leader meetings. So each of the department chairs sitting down with the team leaders that are going through what are their priorities, what are their needs? What things we need to do? What retirements are on the animal? How's your budget going? What, you know, things you doing? So again, as long as he's here to be allowed to do that, so he'll give me a two week crash course to get all the. Transition things that I need to get done, that I wouldn't be able to get done. So I'm very fortunate to have him here and being very, very supportive. Of doing of doing that. Um. Thursday and Friday, we will be doing grade level assembly. Some are combined, some are separate. So it's almost similar to like a beginning of the school year thing, but introduce myself. Uh, I was, I didn't want to wait three weeks for Kirk to be here. So he's aware of it, you know, someone knows that I'm doing it. And kind of a reset of expectations, you know, what are expectations? We're gonna review cell phones. I'm gonna kick off the attendance to show the attendances. What is your expectation given class on time? What is your expectation to go do those things? What is cafeteria behavior gonna look like? You know, and and I'm not a part timer. So you know, so there are things that we're gonna be going through. And some of it, they're probably gonna be pushed back. You know, they're gonna push and see how far they're gonna go and.
Good.
You know, and I can be a brick wall at times too.
Good. Well, that's.
So. So that does everything, but I think we need to have it. But but it is not fair. I can't, it's not fair to students not to know what the expectations are ahead of time. You know, and then once we set the expectations, you know, you know, there we, you know, we are. You know, one of the things you'll hear me say is, you know, if you're, you get in trouble for your cell phone, you're not a victim. You know what the consequences are, you know these things, you don't play the victim. But there are responsibilities, there are responsibilities, there's expectations and these are cons- natural consequences that come. That's the only way that you can adjust and become an successful adult. I mean, that's ultimately what our goal is.
Our reaction is.
Yeah, so we're gonna be doing that. So we have those coming up. Um, other thing we've done, eighth graders just went to Potato Hill Farm uh, yesterday with snow shoeing and cross country skiing. Uh, we talked about the March Madness, so if that is on board, we have two athletes tonight completing a state qualifiers for track, indoor track field. Um, boys varsity, we talked about that as Thursday night, our musical, uh, the semi-formal, they got snowed out February, will be March seventh. Uh, and then we talked about hosting all county.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the things we also want to include in here tonight is just kind of, and as we do a presentation, I'll try to highlight some of the different academic things from different areas to kind of like see what goes on. You know, during the day and you know, what are our kids working on and what are some of the products? So. Here's seventh grade E L A class is a research project on Native American tribe. So they looked at different tribes around um. The uh, not that, they had to narrow it down. One of the things when we look at next gen standards is um. Students are gonna have to be able to do, conduct research, be able to read primary sources. You know, pick out what our quality sources are and then um. You know, come up with a question, what are, research it, how do we solve things? And then I'll reproduce something, click to the next one. So with this one, you know, they had to end up finally picking on their one tribe. They weren't looking for it. They had to construct something of looking at housing. Uh, they had to put out displays. These these displays are in our library. Um, so one of the things, you know, these are seventh graders, these are the ones that are gonna be going through our portrait of graduating. And as those graduation standards change. And what we're looking for, the skills that are gonna be on the new transfer and stuff, one of the big ones is the fact they're communicator. They're gonna have to be able to present. We're gonna have to be able to demonstrate something. We're gonna have to be able to instruct something. So these are starting to build those skills in seventh grade that we will end up sparring. So as we look at curriculum. So as we look at curriculum from seven twelve, you'll hear in this building, in each department, how are you spiraling these. Skills that we need throughout, cause eventually down the road, we're gonna have to document how each kid has done that. And that's what's gonna be the graduation transcript, you know, and we're gonna see that in twenty twenty nine, you know, so that's definitely something that's on the thing. But again, so these are just, and you know, making learning authentic, I mean, I think that's ultimately the goal, you know, one. One of the best ways to get kids at school is if kids engage, there's something I'm looking forward to do, so it's very important as we look at AI, look at different things like that. We need to find things that kids are engaged to, that they're buying into, so they wanna be there to that, at least one, again, intrinsic. Incentive for them to come to school and to participate more, you know, the person doing the work, doing the thinking is the one who's doing the work. You know, we kinda have to take that old model, uh, the teacher giving out that information, you know, the person doing the work is the one who's doing it. And you know, I may go back, Dr. Spring, you and I go back a long time, you know, Harry Wong, you know, one of the big things, he writes birthday school, you know, he talks about. You know, you walk, you see the end of the day, kids are bouncing off the wall, running out of the building, all excited and the teachers are all dragging, well, who did all the work all day long? You know, as the teacher, you know, we wanna like switch that paradigm and you know, classrooms should aren't, you know, museums, they should be destruction sites. You know, and doing this, I'm supposed to mess with these projects ultimately. And that's the model that we're gonna hopefully transition to over the next few years.
So, um. So you each have a copy of our course selection, our program studies book?
Yeah, so photos, right, so that's the course that lot brings that students are currently working, you know, through. Uh, we're working right now, I believe with grade eight and grade eleven, council, I meet with the kids.
And parents.
And parents, uh, and having the parents come in, that many parents as we can to get in and kind of talk about that process and what it looks like. Um, we talked briefly with the counselors yesterday and then what we have our first meeting on Thursday, really set our timeline for building the master schedule. I love master schedule, it's my favorite thing to do, most people don't like any.
That's good.
I love the master schedule.
Yes, most people don't like it.
They want no part of it, give me master schedule and budget, it's my two favorite things, um. So, you know, it's it's a building that and putting on that timelines, I don't wanna be crunched, I'm neurotic about my schedule. You know, trying to balance class sizes, meeting student needs, building those sorts of things, so the counselors will be on a fixed schedule. You know, these are what I need my numbers, these are what we're gonna do these and that sort of stuff, so again. It's just one system that we're trying to update, put things in their place and hopefully once it gets in there, then let someone be able to stay for a while, yeah. Trying.
Sounds great.
Yep, exciting.
Quite the plan for a couple days.
Forty eight hours.
Yeah, Jimmy, did you know?
We're, we're very excited, we, we knew you brought a lot of experience and we're looking forward to seeing you.
I'm very excited.
Implement everything and.
There are risks back into things, first day is always, you know, but once we get going and things like that, it's gonna go, so. I just appreciate the support, I appreciate your willingness to pick me up and do things, so I am very grateful, I just really looking forward. The team approach to what we need to do.
Perfect, yeah.
So I'd like to ask our students if you had any, any words you would like to say or anything? No, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if there's anything like. No, if there's anything. You know, about, hey, you know, new principal or anything? Not to put you on the spot.
But we are.
Um, we were just wondering if there's like any update on, we mentioned safety during lockdown drills, you know, we see through the windows in the courtyard. We're just wondering if like, there's been any actions taken to address that.
So, uh, you were talking about when during a lockdown, you pull down the shade that covers the window on the door, is that what you're talking about?
No, like when you're in a room that has a window in the courtyard.
Oh, in the courtyard, yeah, okay, um, so those are, that that's a big purchase and we. We think it's a great idea and we wanna work in it, so we're not sure if we're gonna be able to do that as a capital outlet project or a capital project. Or just out of our budget, so I will report back to you on it, we do, we, I spoke to our head of maintenance about it. And he's getting estimates of how many rooms and how much it will cost for me, so that we can then, and I'll bring it to the board and, uh.
Well, I was just gonna suggest, can we just make sure it's on the agenda for the capital project?
Sure.
That's the mechanism, to make sure it's discussed.
What would be the the purchase, shades?
Yeah.
Because in a lockdown situation, you're not supposed to pull down the shades, so what would be the protocol for that?
So I think the girls.
No, I, yeah, I remember that, but so then would the teacher be responsible for pulling down the shades even though they're not supposed to?
Yes, yeah, well, I think the fear was the visual, if there is an active shooter event and they they.
Maybe there's other schools that have encountered this before or would treat like bushes or something.
So, uh, we didn't have our safety committee meeting, but it is something we can talk about in safety.
So what I would actually direct this right to is. The safety committee also, I would also go to our liaison for the United Sheriff's Office, what do they recommend? Um, because I know from my school, BBS also has a courtyard, I never really thought of it, you brought up a perfect point. But what does law enforcement recommend? I was not aware of that, to me, I pulled down the shade, so you can't see who's in there. But there's obviously a safety concern and a reason why, there's already policies and procedures up why we stay in play, you know, or stay and leave everything as is. So I think, really think we should get a hold of our professionals in this situation versus us just. Well, you know, putting out ideas and why is a policy a policy, there's gotta be somebody that already has reasons.
Yeah.
Why behind these bad guys and why like bad individuals make these decisions, so that's, but no, that's a good point, you know.
Thank you for bringing it up and we'll, you know, to remind us, so we'll look into that.
Absolutely, a large cost, it's a lot of square footage.
Yeah.
It's gotta be eighty feet, eighty, eighty, you're looking, you're looking almost four hundred feet of material, which irrelevant to, if that's what we need, that's what we need.
Right, right. So we'll find out and then we'll report back and then, uh. And then we'll go from there, if it is a purchase that we can do, we'll let you know. Anything else?
There, there was something from Eddie, who's not here.
Yes, yep, I looked at.
So I think we should table that till.
Okay.
The next, do you know if he will be at the next board meeting?
He should be.
He should be.
They have musical.
Musical.
Yeah, he said he wanted it pushed off to the next.
Perfect, okay, we just didn't wanna ignore it, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, we're good. I'm looking for the agenda. Uh, there it is.
That brings us to board discussion. We have any additional topics? For administration or?
Two nur- nurse openings, have we moved in any direction for those two openings?
So we, um, are posting on OLS, uh, and we have a number of applicants, so we'll be. Reviewing them and and setting up our committee, and so now we have our, you know, our team in place here, uh, so we'll be moving forward with this.
With, um, I know you had previously set something out about, um, LPN versus RN with two openings, are we. Curing that towards one and one or?
So again, we have to, you know, go through the the applications and go through the interviews and. And assess the candidates, um, and also, so tomorrow I do have MBHS coming. And we're going to be inter- taking like an inventory of what's, what is here in both of the school based health centers. And when that is going to actually open, so I think that is also an important part of this discussion. Of whether we go LPN for one of the the nurses offices, so, so that's another reason why I'm holding off, just to see what happens with the school.
So with an LPN being hired, do they have to work under the RN's license?
No, no, the LPN, so an LPN can't legally assess, okay? So if there were a situation, let's say, let's say we had a fight and there was an injury, then we would have to have. Uh, the school based health center, it could be the nurse practitioner from there, or we could have the RN from the other building, um, come here. So it is legal and according to our WTA contract, it states nurse, so we could have. Um, either an LPN or an RN according to to that as well.
Are we gonna try to hire before Tessa leaves so that there's some hopeful training or?
So, um, right now, we're moving forward with it and, uh, we will have training, um, so.
I had a question, uh, Mr. Parity sort of addressed it. And it's open ended, I would be curious, I think the board would be interested to understand, once you set expectations on the cell phone policy. If you could give us a report. Even via email would be fine on where we actually are right now with compliance, I've heard different things. I would like to just get your assessment of, how are we doing? And then where do we need, right, how do we get where we wanna be, cause I know we're not there, so, okay.
So I, I have not been here in the last, um, few, uh, couple meetings, but. I did hear you make a mention, uh, Mohawk Valley Health Services are gonna be coming in to evaluate for. Uh, they look into possible, I know there was possibility of partnership.
Already, also, so they applied for to the New York State Department of Health to open a school based health center here.
Okay.
So the estimated date is April.
Oh, wow.
Right, so they're coming to see the inventory, they wanna know what they need to. Purchase so that they can outfit both of the school based health centers.
And will. Will this be something that we have to also negotiate with our?
So we'll have a, we're gonna have a contract, no.
No.
We, we're going to have a contract, obviously, we'll, we'll work with our attorney, our school attorney on that, and it will be board approved, so we're not there yet.
Yep.
Um, and the other thing is, we did get a refund from Upstate Family Health, I told you. It was a sixty thousand dollar refund, I know, and so that is money, those are monies that will go towards. Supporting the partnership with MBHS.
Wow. Are they probably about charging us the same way?
They haven't said anything, we haven't gotten that gotten that far, but obviously, these were monies that were pandemic relief monies that were designated for a school based health center. We have the check, we deposited it, but it still is earmarked for that purpose, so that's, that's, that's what we will do.
Especially with.
To help offset costs and also we don't know what's happening with Medicaid, Medicaid is is a huge part of making the numbers work, so right now, we don't know.
I think our numbers, I think the Medicaid with current administration, I think we're gonna be okay in that situation, from what I see on my medical experience. That with the insurances and the re- refunds.
But it's just what happens on the federal.
No, that's what I'm saying, on the current administration, um. But, and I'm, I'm a huge advocate for the school based health center, especially with the current. Flu and everything that's going on and where we personally cannot get into your own family doctor.
Right.
And just to get a simple medication.
Right.
You know, I, it's, I'm a huge advocate for it and whatever I can do to, I'm a huge advocate for it.
Well, I'll have the curve, can you have a districts? And do that, especially in both buildings.
Love here. Well, again, though, as long as we, I wanna make, I've been pretty clear about this, I don't wanna, I don't wanna see a situation where they come back and. We spent six hundred thousand dollars on this. And we don't anticipate that, correct?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay, we don't anticipate them coming to us and say it'll be.
Oh, no, and we're not gonna do that, that's not gonna even be part of it, no, we've spent our money, we're done. We're done with that, we have sixty thousand left, that's the money that, you know.
Right, but they need sustain this year after year.
Absolutely, yeah, so we need to make the numbers work.
Good.
Any other board discussion? We're at our first public comment, then.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Cindy, I, I didn't get the number, how much does it cost for a large school less this year?
I believe it was a hundred and seventy seven thousand.
Seven thousand, I can go back to my slide, there I have it. Just get back there.
From eighty nine to a hundred and seventy seven.
One seventy seven, four twenty five. Thank you.
Job, Kate.
That much more.
You're faster than me.
Is that, is that vote a proposition on the budget?
Correct.
Would have to be a proposition, yeah.
And we do it every year, Patty.
Okay. Seven one, do we have a consent agenda here on, what next? Seven dash one, can I get a motion?
So moved. Check it.
Okay, thanks, and then Tim, any discussion on our personnel moves? All those in favor?
All right.
I. Opposed? Motion is carried, moving into new business, that we have another consent agenda for. Eight four, I covering items eight one through eight three, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Tim.
Second.
Thanks, Kate, uh, any discussion?
I noticed in the bond resolution, we're supposed to have two thirds of the board vote on it.
Yeah, I read that too.
Yeah, so. If all more of us vote, yes, we don't have two thirds. Yeah, we gotta have five to, to get two thirds.
Have to table that.
Yeah, and and again, we would just need to understand, there shouldn't be any concern with that to our next scheduled meeting.
Well, that's what I was.
We would need a special.
Good catch, thank you.
Therefore, be resolved by favor, not less than two thirds of the members of the school board, so. Good catch.
Yeah, barring that discussion, can we amend the motion, can I get a motion? For consent agenda eight or covering items eight one and eight three? So, thank you, Tim.
Second.
Thank you, Kate. Any additional discussion? Okay, amended consent agenda. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We're tabling eight two to the next meeting. All right, we are right back at second public comment.
I have a question, um, did you go that I hit which on spot?
Sure.
Did you give an update on the superintendent search?
Um, we, we can, uh, it's in process with Dr. Kilburn leading the search. We have, I don't know if we've communicated it off the top of my head, did catch me, we have all committed to our dates for interviews. For the various timelines, first round, second round, so the board has locked all those in. Uh, and we're on track, but there's no additional updates at this point. We're following our search timeline.
Not sure I know what that is. I guess that's one, where are you, like, do you have all the applicants in, are you?
We're taking and vetting out, so Dr. Kilburn is taking the applicants and then will provide us with a list of vetting. Applicants, which we will then reveal, we're not, it's soon, but still taking.
About your work.
Yeah. Yeah. It's coming quickly, he leaves here, so. Yeah, we'll provide, the next meeting, we can provide the more detailed update, I'll go into that, we'll make sure Dan knows. Thank you. And I will know, I've been distracted, Danny Castelli's running right now, so.
Oh.
One with two students. Fingers crossed. Any other public comment? We don't really have any other public, Mike shoe, sort of, sort of in an official. Right.
Depends what you had on there.
All right, so that moves us to, do we have a need for an executive session, I don't think we do. Man, I'll run these, these got meetings all the time, let's go, can I, uh, get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Next, Ken. Ken, so, uh, seven thirty seven, motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
I.
I.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Man, it's great, they were never like that when I was.